Hello, check, check, check. I think that sounds good. Okay, one, two, three, four. I think we're good. So, thank you, everybody. This is our public hearing and informational session for J. H. Baxter that starts now at 5:30, and we don't have too many people participating at this point. We have a couple attendees on Zoom, so welcome to everybody on Zoom. And in the room, we don't have any in-person participants for our public hearing so far today. But in short, welcome to ARAPA's informational meeting and public hearing for the proposed air permit for J. H. Baxter and Company, which we will be referring to as Baxter. My name is Travis Knutson, the Public Affairs Manager for ARAPA. And first off, I do want to mention that language services are being provided this evening. And because of that, everybody who's participating on Zoom needs to choose one way or the other of how they would like to listen to what channel. And I actually need to start sharing the presentation here. Okay, so if our Spanish interpreter, Victor, if you aren't able to provide us with some instruction for those who are online to choose their channel to join, that would be great if you can help want to do that.
Thank you. For those who would like to join the interpretation channel in English, there will be two options. If you're joining through a desktop computer or a laptop, there will be an icon at the bottom of your screen that says interpretation. From there, you can select the option in English. Otherwise, if you're joining through a laptop or an iPad or a mobile device, there will be three dots at the bottom of your screen that says more, and from there, you can select the language interpretation option in the menu, and from there, select English.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that, Victor. We do have a couple people who are signing in here, so we'll give them a moment to sit down. Hello, welcome to our public hearing tonight for J. H. Baxter. I also want to mention to everybody that this meeting is being recorded. And following this informational session where we talk about J. H. Baxter, we will then be doing an informal Q and A session, which will be an opportunity for you to ask your questions in an informal way. We can give you your answer of our panelists here. And then from there, we'll move into the actual public hearing. And during that public hearing, those who wish to submit oral comments will use the raise hand feature on Zoom to indicate your desire and your intent to submit public comment. Comments will be limited to about three minutes per person, and comments can be written and also emailed to permitting@arapa.org. Those who are online and submitting public comments will be promoted to a panelist to allow them to open their microphones and turn on their camera if they so choose. So tonight, we're discussing J. H. Baxter's draft permit renewal that is open for public comment. First, we do have an informational session, then we'll have a Q and A session, and following that, we will hold the public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to make public comments on the proposed action by ARAPA to issue a simple air contaminant discharge permit for the facility. A public hearing is a term that regulatory agencies use to describe the part of the public process that invites comments on proposed actions before an agency. Any questions you would like immediate answers to should be asked during the Q and A session, as ARAPA won't be able to respond to any questions or comments or respond to those public comments made until the public comment period closes. And we will be accepting those written comments until 5:00 P. M. on Friday, May 26th of this year. All comments are treated equally whether you speak tonight or you submit your comment to us in writing. I want to emphasize that your perspectives, questions, and comments are very important to us at ARAPA as we finalize the proposed permit. We appreciate your time you're taking to be here tonight. ARAPA recognizes how much time it takes to learn about and follow these important issues, so thank you for your involvement. And before we begin, I want to ask if there are any representatives of other agencies, tribal governments, or elected officials or the representatives with us tonight? Don't believe so. Oh, we have Susan Turnblum and Dylan Darling with DEQ, which we'll get to here just a moment, and also a reminder that this meeting is being recorded. So we have some ARAPA staff present here tonight. We'll go through them one by one. First, we have Kelly, who is our public hearing officer. Steve Dietrich is here, who is our executive director. Max Huffley is here, who is our permit writer and operations manager. Cassandra Jackson, who is the compliance inspector for the facility. Myself, Travis Knutson, I'm the public affairs manager. In the back, we have Colleen Wagstaff and Robbie Robinson, also ARAPA staff. And Lance Giles, we have here as well, helping us with some IT items. And we have Holly Dixon with the Oregon Health Authority, a toxicologist. She's joining us this evening. And then mentioned already, we have Dylan Darling and Susan Turnblum with DEQ in the back. So some important information here. There is a sign-in sheet for the back for those who are in person. Those who are with us on Zoom, we have your information that's logged automatically, that Zoom does. If you would like to submit a comment to us orally, there is a sign-up sheet in the back to submit that oral comment. And then, of course, we do take written comments that can be emailed to permitting. Some kind of quick, important information. The facilities are just around the corner here for everybody in person. We ask that there's no smoking or vaping, and if you do have any cell phones, please silence them for the benefit of everybody else. Quickly, we'll go through some of the productive rules for engagement, which is to, of course, be respectful of everybody here and all the diverse perspectives that we may have, as well as agency representatives and staff. Speak only when you are recognized to speak. Please do not interrupt one another or those who are speaking. Limit any side conversations, especially because we have online participants here today. We have some microphones that pick up those side conversations very easily and can be very distracting for our online audience. And don't applaud, whistle, or boo to indicate support or disagreement. All right, so now I provide an overview of the changes to the draft permit for J. H. Baxter. If you have any questions, please keep them or write them into the Q and A session or keep them ready for when we reach the Q and A informal portion of tonight. We'll take those questions after the presentation. And once again, this is a reminder that any of those informal questions is the time to ask them before we go into the public hearing, because if there's a question asked that's submitted as a formal public comment, we won't be responding to that question until the public comment period closes, which is Friday, May 25th. So talk a little bit about J. H. Baxter, which is a wood preservation facility in West Eugene. This is a facility that's been operating for quite some time. It started in 1943 and has historically treated different types of wood, such as railroad ties and electrical poles. It's located off of Roosevelt Boulevard in Eugene, Oregon. If you would like to learn more information about J. H. Baxter, there actually is a really nice story map that was put together by some agencies, as well as a group called the Core Team. And we assembled this to provide some historical information, as well as update the public on regulatory involvement, interactions with J. H. Baxter. So to start off a little bit about the facility, we'll go through a brief history lesson here. So as I mentioned earlier, 1943 was when J. H. Baxter began operations. In 1968, that's when ARAPA was founded. The Clean Air Act was passed by Congress and signed into law in 1970. 1970 is also when ARAPA issued J. H. Baxter's first air permit. In 1990, the Clean Air Act saw some amendments to include provisions that address acid rain, ozone depletion, as well as toxic air pollution. And 2008, the EPA issued what's called a NESHAP, or a National Emissions Standard for Hazardous Air Pollutants for Wood Preservers, which J. H. Baxter is a wood preserver. In 2018, the Oregon EQC, or Oregon Environmental Quality, adopted Cleaner Air Oregon, which regulates facilities based on potential health risk. We'll be talking a little bit about potential health risk and CAO here in this presentation. Then in 2019, ARAPA's board adopted Cleaner Air Oregon by reference to DEQ's rules. In December of 2019, J. H. Baxter was in the first group of five facilities that was called into Cleaner Air Oregon in Lake County. In January of 2022, last January, January, yeah, 2022, Baxter announced that the facility was ending wood treatment operations and that they were shuttering. In February of 2022, ARAPA prohibited Baxter from resuming their wood treatment work due to outstanding Cleaner Air Oregon requirements. And then in December of 2022, that's when Baxter applied for the Simple Air Contaminant Discharge Permit, or ACDP, which is the permit that we're discussing here this evening. In March 2023, the EPA conducted a technical review of that wood preservation NESHAP I mentioned on the previous slide and implemented no significant changes to those rules they established prior. And then in April last month, we placed the draft simple ACDP on public notice to begin a 50-day public comment period, which we are currently in the middle of now. So I want to start by talking about Baxter's proposed permit by first reviewing some of the things that was in J. H. Baxter's old permit, which is called a standard air contaminant discharge permit. The permit that Baxter has up for public comment right now is a simple air contaminant discharge permit. There's a difference between the two. But under the old standard ACDP, there's different emission units in that permit that incorporate different activities at the facility. So the first emission unit, emission unit one, that incorporates processes that are associated with wood treating activities, which for J. H. Baxter, that was items like the retorts, treated storage, the railcar agitation, as well as any emissions from like work tanks. There was a second emission unit that was in the standard air contaminant discharge permit, the old permit. And this incorporated emissions from equipment and processes that are associated with drying wood at the facility. And J. H. Baxter had three drying kills that they used to dry that wood, and so that's qualified as emission unit number two. The third emission unit incorporates processes that are associated with generating steam at J. H. Baxter. And for that, they had two gas-fired boilers that used number-two oil as backup. So all of the emissions from that activity was quantified in emission unit number three. Emission unit number four incorporates equipment and processes that are associated with woodworking activities. So Baxter would do some woodworking before they put the wood into the retort to pressure treat it. So emissions from those activities include things from the deep incisor, the lumber incisor, framing equipment, as well as the timber incisor. And then emission unit number five, this incorporates emissions that are associated with the evaporator that they have on site, as well as a cooling tower and a hot water well. So for the old permit, J. H. Baxter's standard air contaminant discharge permit, those are the five emission units that were under that permit. Now, the new permit, which you see there on the right-hand side of your screen, the permit that's up for public notice right now that we're talking about here this evening, this is a simple air contaminant discharge permit. And the difference between standard is simple. Is simple is a, I guess, more restrictive permit. There's less activities that can take place or exist under a simple air contaminant discharge permit. So what you see there on the right-hand side, those are all the same emission units that were in the old permit. But the new permit does not include a lot of those old emission units. So emission unit number one, emission unit number two, and emission unit number four are not included in this standard or the simple permit that's out for public comment right now, which would be the permit that J. H. Baxter would be moving to. The only activity that's included under the simple air contaminant discharge permit is emission unit three and emission unit five, which is essentially generating steam for the evaporator, those two activities. So no wood treating activities are allowed under this new permit. So a big difference between the old standard ACDP and the new one is wood treatment is not something that the permit will permit. It's not something that an activity that can resume under the permit that is proposed currently. So then the question, following that up, is if Baxter's essentially closed, why do they still even need an air permit to begin with? And the answer to that question is they're required to meet environmental requirements and regulations regardless of operating equipment status. Regardless of what the facility is doing, whether they're open or whether they're closed, whatever's going on, they still have environmental requirements that they are obligated to meet. And those are water quality regulations that specify how much wastewater Baxter can discharge into surface waters off-site. And their water quality permit does not allow any rainwater that falls into containment areas on site to be discharged into Amazon Creek, for example. So because they have these wastewater requirements, the only thing that Baxter can do for any rainwater that essentially falls into their containment areas on the property is to evaporate that rainwater, and that evaporation creates an air emission, and they need an air permit with us to be able to do that work and create those emissions. So that's why there still is a need for a facility that's not currently active or working to have that air permit. So then the follow-up question to that is, okay, if there's emissions coming from Baxter, there still is an air permit, then what's the health risk of those emissions? So to answer this question, that's where Cleaner Oregon comes into line. And what we did to answer this question is we conducted an agency-initiated Cleaner Oregon health risk assessment of emissions from the boiler and the evaporator, which will be the only two pieces of equipment operating on site. And the way that this health risk assessment is done is we look at all the pollutants that are coming out from those activities, and we say, what's the toxicity to those pollutants? How potentially harmful is it to people who are exposed to these pollutants? So the toxicity of pollutants that will be coming from the evaporator and the boiler, that's understood and that's established. And these toxicity information, it incorporates safety margins to safeguard the well-being of more people who are most sensitive, like young children, anyone who's pregnant, those who have an ongoing chronic health condition. Those are individuals who would be more sensitive and more impacted by our environment and by any kind of pollution. So the toxicity information that we look into takes this into account, so it makes some broad health assumptions and sets those safety margins up. So when we know the pollutants toxicity, the pollutants that are coming out of their emissions, the toxicity of them, then we have to look at, okay, who's exposed to these emissions? Who's breathing these emissions? And when we're able to determine who is exposed and in what quantity, then with that information, we are able to create a health risk assessment or potential health risk. And with that information, that's how we're able to understand the potential health risk of emissions from J. H. Baxter. And so there are various ways in Cleaner Oregon that you can calculate this potential health risk. There's very straightforward and simplistic ways that make sweeping assumptions that are very health-protective in the sense of saying if there's pollution that comes into the air, it goes straight to someone where it might breathe it. That's like the most straightforward, direct way to do it, and that overestimates health risk. And then there's more complicated ways that don't overestimate health risk but give you more of a exact answer. Our process here for this potential health risk is we did the most straightforward approach that has the most sweeping assumptions or health-based assumptions in that approach called a Level One Health Risk Assessment. And once we are able to establish what that potential health risk for not only J. H. Baxter, but any facility that is in Cleaner Oregon, we are then given authority under Cleaner Oregon to add more rules or regulations on a particular source or facility, depending on what the health risk is. So to talk a little bit about what is potential health risk, Holly Dixon from OHA has been to stand up here and share a little bit.
Awesome. Great. Thank you. Thanks, Travis. So my name is Holly Dixon, and I'm a public health toxicologist at Oregon Health Authority. And I spend a lot of my time on this Cleaner Air Oregon program. And one of my big roles, as Travis mentioned, is updating and reviewing that toxicity information, which is the information on how harmful contaminants can be for health. And I review that to make sure it reflects the latest comprehensive science and is health-protective. And so tonight, I have a few slides on health risk to share with you. Perfect. So the first thing I wanted to note is that health risk is different than health outcomes. So health risk, I have the definition up here, but it's the chance or probability of a health effect happening in the future. And this is different than health outcomes, which are health problems that have already happened. So for the Cleaner Air Oregon program, regulations and requirements are based on health risk and not health outcomes. And this is because we're intending these regulations to be proactive and not respond to people who are already sick, but to take action before that. So I have a little background here on how air contaminants affect health. And I have all these different organs up here to represent that we take a look at a wide variety of potential health effects that can occur from toxic air contamination exposure. And one of the things that we look at and why we look at a wide variety of health effects is that different toxic air contaminants can affect different organs in the body. So there's a lot of different organs, a lot of different systems that can be affected. So for example, some contaminants can affect us the lungs and lead to breathing problems. So we take a look at all of these different effects, and there's two main categories that toxicologists look at in terms of health effects, one being cancer and one being non-cancer. So I'll briefly give a little bit of background on these categories. The first one is cancer, and for this, when we look at risk for cancer, we make an assumption that any exposure to a contaminant that can cause cancer can lead to an increase in cancer risk for someone down the road. And so with this assumption, we talk about cancer risk in terms of probability. So any exposure can lead to increased risk, and we talk about it in terms of an additional case of cancer from exposure in a population, a theoretical population of 1 million people. So we talk about that as additional cancer cases in that population of 1 million. And we put that in context of the background rate of cancer. So for the background rate, the American Cancer Society estimates that the kind of normal U.S. population background rate is 400,000 cases of cancer per 1 million people. So it's in context to that background rate. And that 400,000 background rate is a combination from all different types of factors. So that can be genetics, and that can be different environmental factors, lots of different things. So all in all, for cancer, we assume any exposure can increase risk, and we talk about it in terms of probability. And the other category up here is non-cancer. And for non-cancer, what we do is we have a screening tool that we use, and this is for health effects that aren't cancer, like breathing problems or infertility or heart disease. And the screening tool is called a hazard index. And what it is, it's a calculation that we can do. We look at all the different emissions coming out from a facility, and we can add them up. And it tells us if health effects are expected or not. And if those non-cancer health effects are expected, then toxicologists can take a closer look and do some more digging and find out where the non-cancer risk is. So with all that said, we did this for Baxter, and so we have two main conclusions here that I'll go over. But the first one up here is that non-cancer health effects are not expected from Baxter's emissions at all. And then cancer health effects from Baxter's emissions are considered very low from our public health agency. And we're very confident in these conclusions here with this permit and these operating conditions because of all those assumptions that Travis brought up just a minute ago. One being that was a really health-protective assessment that was done, and all of those health-protective assumptions that went into that toxicity information. So really confident that we're not expecting non-cancer health effects from this permit conditions and cancer health effects are considered very low. And with that, Travis will go over these results in more context of regulations for Cleaner Air Oregon.
Thank you, Holly. And I do want to mention too, or just emphasize, that the assessment conclusions here of the cancer and non-cancer health effects are not expected from Baxter's emissions. This is for just clarity in reference to the permit that is proposed currently. So the emissions coming from the boiler and from the evaporator is what is being assessed in this health risk assessment and where these conclusions are being drawn from. And so what does that look like in a numbers perspective? So there is a big table here, and there's a lot of numbers on these tables, but we'll kind of go through it one by one to help understand and walk through what it is that you're looking at on the screen. So the first section I want to draw your attention to is on the left-hand side here. So the numbers you see, that 2.5 under chronic cancer risk, the chronic non-cancer risk, and the acute risk, those numbers, that's the potential health risk from Baxter. So that's the number that we arrive when we're talking about looking at all the toxicity of the pollutants, seeing who's exposed to them and how much. That's the result of that assessment, are those numbers. And then the way Cleaner Air Oregon, which is, this is a Cleaner Air Oregon chart essentially, this is where we, as a regulator, are able to apply more rules or regulations or requirements on a facility depending on what these numbers here on the left are and how they stack up to the numbers here on the right. So the numbers you see on the right-hand side, those are the risk action levels. And essentially, these are the numbers that the Oregon legislator sets. And this is what we as ARAPA in Lake County and DEQ outside of ARAPA say. We look at that potential health risk, and then we compare those numbers to the numbers we see here on the right-hand side. And depending on where those numbers fall in this chart, that provides us as regulators to require facilities to make changes at their facility. So the first number is this chronic cancer risk, which is 2.5. And that is the estimated number of cancer cases per million people beyond what would be considered average rates in cancer society or in society. So that 2.5 is below the source permit level of five, below that risk action level. So under Cleaner Oregon rules, if that number was to exceed that five number, that's when we could start requiring facilities to do different things depending on what that emission risk is. These next two numbers, these are acute risk or non-cancer risk and the acute risk. These numbers, if they're essentially less than one, if the number is less than one, it's not expected that those emissions will have any harm to human health. So for the chronic non-cancer risk, that hazard index was 0.3, and for the acute risk, it was 0.5. So on the acute risk, it ties that source permit level, that lowest level under Cleaner Oregon, but it is far below the chronic non-cancer risk of 0.5 being at 0.3. So this is that potential health risk assessment and how it compares under Cleaner Oregon rules that gives ARAPA regulatory authority to make the source, in this case, J. H. Baxter, do things different. So the next steps in this process for J. H. Baxter is the draft simple ACDP, the permit that we're here talking about tonight, the new permit that J. H. Baxter has open for public comment. That is still open, and it continues until essentially the end of May, May 26th at 5:00 P. M. Or Friday, May 25th, excuse me. You can review all of those documents on our website at arapa.org. We also have those documents here in the back, if you would like to grab them to look at them. We have an informational public meeting, public hearing, which is what we're doing right now here. It is May 9th at T. B. Jean's Library. We have a few people here participating in person, as well as those joining us online. The next step is the public comment period closes, closes May 26th at 5:00 P. M. If you would like to submit a public comment, you can do so orally here, or you can do it by emailing permitting@arapa.org. Again, a oral comment set tonight or a written comment submitted to us have equal weight. There's not one that holds more than the other. And then we will, ARAPA will issue that simple air contaminant discharge permit. There are permit changes that are possible depending on any substantive comments that are submitted to us during that public comment period. So that concludes the informational session on this proposed permit. Next, we're going to open up to some informal question and answers. This is an opportunity to ask any questions you may have and receive answers from our panelists here. Before then, we will go into the public hearing, which at that point, any questions that are asked as a public comment, we won't respond to until the close of the comment period. So from our in-person participants, do you guys have any questions? And then I'll look online to see if any questions either.
You're going to do a permit for this. How often do you recheck these numbers? Is that like a yearly thing, or when will they get another permit?
Yeah, I'll pass it on up to Max.
Yeah, so for a simple ACDP, the permit term is five years. They're required to submit reports to us annually, and then Cassandra Jackson, as the inspector, will go out there periodically and check their records and make sure they're operating within the established parameters.
And are there any drop-in, don't let them know you're coming moments?
Yeah, we routinely do surveys around, like odor surveys around the neighborhood, and then we routinely go by, so.
Okay.
Yeah, unannounced.
Thank you.
And then I'll mention online as well, for our participants there, if you do have a question, please put it into the Q and A section on Zoom. And that will be how we can see that. I'll stop sharing my screen here, so that way I can see if we have any of those key questions for individuals. And I don't see any questions there. And then on the tier question- And then yeah, on the, to your question, we do have our inspections, which can be both formal where we let the facility know that we're coming, but there's also surprise inspections. And whether that's on Baxter or another source, those two can be instigated by air quality complaints that El Rapa will receive. Someone says, I'm smelling something funky at a particular source and then.
Otherwise submit a funky air report to El Rapa. I've tried it online. I don't understand how to do that. And I, I come out of my store at night and the air smells bad from the north blowing towards Eugene. And I'm like, well, what the heck is up north of of the library branch on Barger that would smell like that?
Yeah, that is where letting El Rapa know that you're having that experience is helpful to us because that does initiate essentially an air quality investigation to see what may that be that potential source. If it is connected to an industry facility that has a permit with us, then we can go through the permit and say, was there any violations to the permit? Was there anything done wrong? And if so, then we have the ability to correct that. Challenges that kind of lie there is first determining who was the person responsible for that. And that's where over time collective complaints can really be helpful to us. And is why we always encourage people, when you smell something funky or something's bothering you from an air perspective, letting us know is the best way for us to start to initiate that process.
ElRapa.org, that's where I go to get all my air quality information.
Exactly.
There's also a place in there that I can comment on that.
Yeah, if you go to our website, elrapa.org, there's a button on the homepage called file an air quality complaint. We also have a number, I'll get you my card and on the back of it, there's a number where you can call to and just leave a voicemail. We appreciate as much detail as you can. So things like the time it was, where you were at, you know, even conditions like kind of, you know, if it smells like rubber or if it smells like, you know, pulp or something, because we as a industry.
Sometimes I found out it was Junction City was burning down. So, you know, the tire factory or something out there.
Right. And yeah, so those details about the type of smell it is, the way it smells, that can help us because you know, industry has permits with El Rapa.
Right.
So we know what processes are taking place that smell like this versus what other processes smell like that. And then too, what can be tricky is there's a lot of home heating devices, so wood stoves that people use. And that also is another source of air quality concerns complaints.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll check online to see if we have any Q and As that have popped up here for online participants. I don't see any just yet. Did you guys have any other questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I take it this permit is addressing each a occurring from rainwater.
Yeah. So the reason why Baxter has a permit current or this permit is for the facility to generate steam to power the evaporator that's evaporating rainwater that falls into their containment areas.
So during periods of drought, that's really not an active system.
Yeah.
So if there's, how deep into the soil does that extraction process go?
So I think that what you're talking about is going to be the. Yeah. So that's not an air component. That is actually a water quality and then soil component, which would be more to the D E Q side of things. For us, as an El Rapa, as the air regulator, it's the air emissions. But the containment of the onsite is disconnected from that Penta in the groundwater, I think that you're referring to it. Yeah, it's a containment area that exists onsite. The rainwater falls and it keeps it there. It doesn't want it to go anywhere. Yeah. And then because it can't go anywhere, because J H Baxter has water quality permits that says, hey, you can't just put this stuff in the river. They have to process that rainwater and then it goes to a evaporator that takes that rainwater and evaporates it. So that's, that's essentially what this permit is and why Baxter still needs to maintain the permit that they have.
So has that impacted all of the water issues?
No. Right, yeah.
Does it help?
No. And, and on, I'll get you a QR code. There's a story map that was put together that I mentioned earlier that talks more in detail about what you're referring to. And I think that you could find some of that information really helpful. So I'll connect you with that information. I'm here before the evening's over. I'll check one more time if there's any questions here online. Okay, cannot see. So any other questions from you?
Not right now.
Okay. Well, if there's no additional questions, then we'll move into our public hearing portion tonight. Okay. So we're going to start a formal public hearing. Kelly Conlon is our public hearing officer. So Kelly, I'll come bring you the microphone here. Where we'll start the formal public hearing. If there's anybody who would like to submit public comment, you sign up in the back and then you essentially will line up here at the podium. And if you are online and you would like to submit public comment, just raise your hand. And then we will promote you to a panelist. So you can turn on your camera if you so choose and then submit your public comment that way.
Yeah, microphone would work as well. The public notice for this hearing provides a link to El Rapa's website. If you would like to receive future email notices about this or any other El Rapa public notice, you may sign up for the automated email notification service on El Rapa's email updates webpage. All documents related to this permit are posted on the website and available here for in-person participants. Any person can submit comments about this proposed permit by email or mail. For those wishing to provide oral comment today, you must first provide your name. You will be recognized by the order in which people use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Online commenters will be promoted to panelists so they may unmute themselves and if desired, turn on their camera. The order of presentation of oral comments will alternate between in-person and online participants. Please state your name and the organization you represent. You will have three minutes to present your comments for the public hearing. Please remember, each speaker will be limited to one comment initially. The agency will review issues raised during the public comment period and the hearings officer report will contain responses to comments. In addition to the opportunity to present oral comments at this hearing, anyone may submit written comments until five P M on Friday, May twenty sixth, two thousand twenty three, which is the close of the public comment period for J H Baxter's simple air contaminated discharge permit renewal and modification. El Rapa will not review or consider comments received after that time. As a reminder, this public hearing is being recorded. Are there any questions about how this hearing will be conducted? At this time, I would like to begin the hearing. This hearing will be recorded to maintain a permanent record. Today is Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand twenty three, and the time is six oh nine. And we are meeting at the downtown Eugene Public Library and virtually using Zoom webinar. My name is Kelly Conlon. I am the presiding officer for this public hearing. And as such, I'm taking comments on behalf of the Lane Regional Air Protection Agency. The purpose of this meeting is to take public comments on the simple air contaminated discharge renewal for J H Baxter and company. El Rapa will not respond to any comments or questions during the hearing. The job of the presiding officer is to hear and acknowledge comments and not to defend the proposed permit. After the hearing, El Rapa will prepare a written presiding officer's report summarizing both written and verbal comments. That report will be available after the comment period closes and it will be sent to the emails of all who submitted public comment. The deadline to submit comments on this proposed permit is Friday, May twenty sixth, two thousand twenty three at five P M. You may also submit written comments until the comment period ends through El Rapa's comment webpage for this proposed permit. All options for providing public comments are included in the public hearings notes. After reviewing the comments, El Rapa may consider revisions to the proposed permit. El Rapa will use its own discretion in deciding whether to issue the permit as proposed, issue the permit as amended to reflect the comments received, postpone issuance or hold additional public hearings. I would like to begin taking comments. If anyone has prepared a written statement or documents, it would be helpful to summarize them orally and then introduce written material into the record by emailing it to permitting@elrapa.org. Written comments are given the same weight as oral comments. When I call your name, please unmute your microphone and then state and spell your full name for the record.
So currently we don't have anybody who is online who have signed up to submit public comment and we have no in-person participants wishing to submit oral comment.
So at this point, no participants have signed up to comment. If no additional participants would like to make comments, this hearing will be adjourned. It is now six twelve. Thank you for coming and providing your comments. The hearing is now adjourned.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So the, just check here in the chat, there was. Into very, yeah. So that is the public hearing to the conclusion of that. So I just want to go over a few next steps here for those online and those in the room. So the public comment period still exists, as Kelly said or mentioned, that continues until five P M Friday, May twenty sixth. The opportunity to submit that public comment still exists. Just email it to permitting@elrapa.org or it can be mailed or brought to our office, which is ten ten Main Street in Springfield. If you'd like to receive email updates from El Rap on opportunities for public comments and be informed on other air related items in Lake County, you can sign up for our email updates list serve, which is also listed on our website. Thank you so much for being here tonight and for taking the time to be involved in this process. That concludes tonight's meeting. Thank you so much.
I appreciate the information. Yeah. One of my favorite things about Eugene is that we've done a good job. And yeah, I've tried to get on here, what else? Thank you. Yeah. I'm one of those people who walks out of my job in the yard, fucking like the night.
Hi, this is Rosa Spanish interpreter.